And, um, the residents, I would like again for you to please fill out cards with questions that you may have that you want asked by either of our candidates, please. Make sure you get those questions in for us. We appreciate it. I also, um, at this forum, our honorable Bishop Leonard McCray will provide us with an opening prayer. There's nothing like getting started with prayer and leading us in a positive direction. Bishop McCray.
(inaudible) Let's go. Uh, who have walked in, I just want them to pray. And let those who are coming and sharing this here, whether it be here, God is how we pray in Jesus' name, God.
Amen.
Thank you. I also would like to begin with a quote by Malcolm X. "We need more light about each other." Light creates understanding. Understanding creates love. Love creates patience. And patience creates unity. And we're gonna have all of that. I'd like at this time to give about five minutes to our candidates to introduce themselves. Tell us a little bit about yourself. And we'll start, Letitia, please.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you all so much for having us here, and I appreciate you having us in the parking lot. Um, of course, we've been out connecting with voters and being around a number of people, so I'm glad to be outside, uh, to make sure that we don't compromise anybody's health. Uh, I'm Letitia Johnson. I am, um, a District Four City Council candidate, as you all are aware. I just want to remind folks that I ran for City Council four years ago, in 2017, and ran against, uh, Councilman Spivey. And I ran because I really wanted to see more support come into our communities to support the work of all of the community leaders and the organizations that we have throughout District Four. Obviously, I did not win. Um, I did fairly well in the general election. I received forty-two percent of the vote. This year, numbers of community leaders reached out to me and said, "Letitia, we really need you to, to run. We need you to step up and make sure that this open seat does not go to someone who has not shown up in our communities, who has not been there, um, for us when we most needed them. Uh, and because you know who we are, because you know the work that we do, because we know you, we know your integrity and the work that you do and what you stand for, we're asking for you to run." And I said to those who asked me, I said, "I will do it on the pretense that you go before me and you share with your community who I am and the work that I've done in this community." For the last fourteen years, um, I've been volunteering. I started with the housing market decline in my neighborhood, fighting to make sure that the owners of properties were held accountable for those properties, that we were keeping people out of them who were stripping houses, that, um, just creating shells because we knew that was really reducing property values. And it was discouraging people from wanting to move into the neighborhoods. I went on from there because of the work that I did in my neighborhood to start Mecca Development Corporation, because we always looked internally and said, "How do we help stabilize our community?" And as a result, I took the time and started this 501(c)(3) nonprofit community development corporation, and it's been a grassroots effort for the last seven years. We've not had the support of City Hall or anyone in particular until last year, we got our first multi-year grant of fifty thousand dollars for three years. All of our funding goes back into creating programming for residents within our communities. We do skill-building programs. We're rehabbing two small properties so that we can start to ensure that everyone has access to affordable homeownership so that they can build wealth. We have literacy initiatives for our children, and we do wellness programs for our, uh, seniors. Uh, within that, I have served on the Board of Zoning Appeals for the City of Detroit, representing the voice of District Four residents and making sure that businesses do right by our communities. And I have a, a record that speaks to that. Anybody can go and pull, um, that information from BZA and the director. I've also served on the Board of the Fifth Precinct Police Community Relations Council, making sure that our police officers develop positive relationships with our residents. I've been out in the cold knocking on doors as an AmeriCorps member, helping to create block clubs to make sure that we, the people, are organized and that we can utilize our power collectively to get whatever it is that we need from City Hall. So I've shown you who I am, so for somebody to come in and usurp my reputation, for people that want to align with the work that I've done in the community and help to make sure that I am the representative that goes to City Hall to support the voice of the people, um, that's not possible, because so many of you know me. You can't go back in time and change my reputation and change the work that I've done. I'm a native Detroit-er, grew up in an impoverished household in the city. I'm a first-generation college graduate, and so I know that it was the support of my chemistry teacher at Kettering High School and my older siblings that helped get me through school. Um, it was no easy task for me, because I had nobody to turn to and say, "Hey, okay, I'm dealing with this, this issue, can you help me with this?" I went through it first to be able to help my younger siblings, my nieces and nephews, and anyone within the community who, who needs that support to be able to get through that process. Um, and so I stand here before you, um, as a person with a finance degree, as a person who has worked in the community, volunteered in the community for the last fourteen years, a native Detroit-er who can empathize with, um, what our communities are dealing with, and somebody who wants to go and support and represent the voice of the people, as I have done over the years. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
ML. Thank you. So, I, I don't know if we're using a timer or not, but, uh, now that we're politicians, when you're on TV, they tell you two minutes, and then two minutes, they cut you off. Now that we're politicians...
You get a little more time.
Okay, well, you know what? Please, don't hesitate to tell me you've heard enough. Uh, thanks very much, first of all, for having me out here today. Uh, I may have to leave before eleven, because we had scheduled two neighborhood cleanups today, and I want to keep my commitment to those folks, and, uh, and we have another forum to do this afternoon. But I'm, I'm, I'm pleased for the chance to be back here today. Bishop McCray, thank you again for having us out. I know we tried to do a forum in September that didn't work, but I'm glad we're able to be here in October, and I actually think the weather's better here in October than it was in September, so, so we got that going for us, which is always nice. Uh, my name's ML Elrich. Uh, I am a twenty-two-year resident of East Outer Drive. I am the street rep for Outer Drive and Whittier. I'm on the Board of the Neighborhood Association, but I was D4 before D4 was cool. My first job after I quit my paper route was on Mac Avenue at Johnson's Milk Depot. When I was in high school, I worked at Kensington East one at the Sherwin Lynch, not the one that's there on, on Cadu, no, but the one that's been vacant for the last ten or twenty years. And that's one of the reasons why I'm running for City Council, is to bring businesses back to our neighborhoods, to create neighborhoods where we can work, shop, dine, and play within walking distance of our homes. This is my first time running for office. I'm not a career politician, I've never run before, but I have kept an eye on politicians who have been there, and I've exposed a lot of corruption in this town, and I've also done a lot to help people who have been discriminated against by employers, who have been beaten down by police. I've been pushed around by the police, and my campaign is all about opportunity, safety, and accountability. Opportunity, like I said, try and create those opportunities, bring people back to our neighborhoods. That's one of the reasons why we have a plan, we've had a plan since the day of the flood, to stop the flooding in our communities. To have the city provide us with backflow providers and sun pumps to keep the water out and to keep it dry, and to use some of this vacant land we have around us that people see as a curse, as a blessing that it truly is, to use it to retain the water that the system can't handle. We can't wait for them to redo the whole system over ten years and charge billions of dollars that they're gonna send back to us as a bill. We need to act now. And I'm in Jefferson Chalmers every week, and I talk to people who've been flooded four or five times. I was flooded once in twenty-two years, two and a half feet of water. I lost precious things my children made that FEMA could never replace. I lost things my grandparents left for me. One flood's enough, and God bless those of you who have put up with multiple floods. That is the true spirit of Detroit, to put up with adversity and to stay and to keep fighting. Well, now I've joined the fight. I go to every DWSD meeting, every GLWA meeting, to remind them of what we've been through. We have a petition calling for these, these solutions. We have over a thousand signatures. And when I go back to those meetings, I also let them know what my neighbors are telling me. "My bill is too high. My basement keeps flooding. Why can't I get an answer on this? The water in my house is brown." And we're getting those problems solved for people. There's a woman on East Lawn just off of Chandler Park, for ten years she tried to get a house knocked down next to her. We got it knocked down, because I know my way around City Hall. I know how to get things done. And when I call people, they know that they're on notice, that they have to step up, they have to do their job, and if they don't, I'm gonna let the whole world know, because that's what I do. I communicate. If you've seen me out next door, I've been communicating about what's going on with the water department, what's going on with some of our economic opportunities. We just put something up the other day about a seminar to help minority businesses get the small loans they need to open those doors, because often what happens is you want to open a business, but you need just, just a little bit of money to try and get the bank to give you a loan. It's called gap financing. I'm here to help close that gap for my neighbors. I've been a coach at Baldur Park, I, I've been a volunteer in the neighborhood for eighteen years. Coach at Baldur Park with Eagle Sports, when we had to cut the grass at Baldur Park. A coach at Messner Park, we brought that park back from the wilderness. I've been a school commissioner at St. Clair, Letitia's son, and, and my children went there, Tom Barrow's kids went there. I've been hearing some stuff about it being a Gross Point school. Let me tell you something, St. Clair is a Detroit school. It's a school where kids in our neighborhoods can go if they want to have an education. It not only includes high-quality instruction, but also faith, because I believe to be successful, you have to have faith. You have to have a foundation where you have a belief that you're willing to fight for. I gave up my job to do this. That's a sacrifice I'm making already, because I believe public service is about service first, and to be a public servant, you have to serve the public, not yourself. So we got some corruption in City Hall. I thought I got a lot of it out. There's still a lot more out there. And we have some, we have some of those folks trying to play a role in our race, trying to send things out to influence you, using money we don't know where it came from. We got people from Gross Point trying to influence this race. I'm running for Detroit. I'm running to represent Detroit. I am a Detroit-er. I'm proud to be here today, and I hope I haven't exceeded my five minutes, because I appreciate the grace you've shown me and the opportunity to be here with you today. Thank you very much.
Let's give 'em both another round of applause, please. I noticed people who were coming in, um, again, the announcement is that we have some cards, and we would like for you to fill out the cards for questions on the end. So if you haven't done that, please take a moment and get a card and fill it out for us. I'm gonna start with some of the questions that were given in early. This to both candidates. What is your understanding of tax increment financing, a TIF, and the different forms of TIF? I'm gonna let ML go first, please.
Thank you. So, uh, before I moved home, I spent a couple of years in Chicago, where tax increment financing was a big way they got their downtown restarted. If you've been in downtown Chicago, you know how dynamic it is. We're using that now in Detroit, but we got a problem with the way we use it. In Chicago, they give you a break and you keep your word. And if we give you a break and you clown us, then that's gotta stop. I'm all for giving somebody an incentive to do something, like I said, with our businesses. I understand that there's a gap, and we need to close that gap. And if you're gonna do a major development that's gonna put our neighbors to work, I understand we may need to help you get over the top, because the banks still don't understand Detroit. If you've had your house assessed lately or appraised, you know they have no idea what your home is worth, because it's worth way more than the folks in McComb County and Oakland County who come out here with their calculators, think it's worth. But here's the problem. When we tell people, "We'll give you this if you give us that," we give them this, because we keep our word, they don't give us that. District Detroit, where is it? I thought we'd have a hundred restaurants by now. I thought the Hotel Letty Stone would be open by now. I don't have to tell you, because you know it's not. So people in Detroit, we learned a hard way what the word clawback means. It means if we made a mistake, we're gonna take some of your money back. This is what happened to retirees, this is what happened to people who made a deal with the city and the city broke it. Well, now that we know what clawback means, if I'm involved in a deal, I'm aware of a deal where we gave you an incentive to build a project, if we gave you a tax increment finance, where we reduce your taxes to help you make that deal work, and you don't live up to what you said you were gonna do, I'm gonna claw it back. I'm gonna go to 'em and say, "Listen, you're supposed to do this, you didn't. We need to have summer jobs for our kids, we need to adopt the park, we need to do something to make sure that you're doing, keeping the faith." Thank you very much.
Again, I'll read it over again. Um, Letitia, what is your understanding of tax increment financing and the different forms of TIF?
So, my understanding of tax incremental financing is, um, where tax dollars are utilized to help finance, uh, different development projects. Um, it may come in, like now I'm seeing a variety of different forms that it comes in and what people are calling it, but essentially it is a development project that receives some public dollars in order for the development project to work, is, is what we're being told, um, and that as development is improved within their particular area, that the increase in the value of the properties within their boundaries, that increase of taxes that would come, so if there was a Kresge right up the street, um, that received TIF dollars, then there was a CBS or a Rite Aid that came upon, um, within the boundaries of that district, that TIF district, the increase in tax dollars as a result of the development project would then essentially go to that initial development that received the, the tax incremental financing, um, so that as opposed to the tax dollars going to the state, into the city, those dollars would be captured by that TIF, um, and help to finance that initial development project.
The next question. Do you believe that TIFs are necessary in order for development to occur? And how should developers be held accountable to fulfill the requirements of a TIF? Approved, Letitia.
So, back in, gosh, I, I believe it was 2000, 2000, I went to work for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, um, and I worked in sales for the Convention Bureau, and our primary focus was to bring conventions to metro Detroit. Of course, our, our initial focus was downtown Detroit. At that time, we didn't see development nearly the way we see it in downtown Detroit, so that, at that time, I would've said, "Okay, yes, let's use some TIF dollars to support developing downtown so that we can be more, um, competitive with other Midwest cities, with other cities throughout the country to attract more tourism and more tourist dollars, um, to help support our hospitality industry that supports a lot of Detroit-ers for, uh, hotel jobs, restaurant jobs, uh, museum jobs and, and the like." So what we've seen, um, which was just mentioned a short while ago, which is something that I mentioned at another forum that we did, we see support going to large developers, and we don't see that reciprocated support coming into our communities. Um, I did talk about clawbacks and making sure that we change the community benefits ordinance so that we can actually start to take money and land back from those developers who do not, um, hold up their end of the agreement. We're starting to see that in the Herman Kiefer area, um, and a development project that they have going on over there, but definitely we have to make sure that we are coming back to that developer and saying, "You didn't hold up your end of the bargain, so it's time for us to take our, our land and our money back." Um, but now, I, I like to, not necessarily TIFs, but tax abatements. I think when we look at our neighborhood commercial, we want to see a revitalized neighborhood commercial corridor with people from our communities, um, and I want to be able to support people from our communities to open up and revitalize our neighborhood commercial.
Yes, 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 yes. Yes. Okay. The next question.
Oh. No, I'll be very brief, I'll be very brief. Do I need to read it again?
No, 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 thank you. And, and I'm gonna be brief, because I think I answered a little bit, and, and the issue of who came up with clawbacks, just go to my website, you'll see our plan on there. Like I said, uh, anybody else here see Mad Max Thunderdome? Remember Tina Turner? Break a deal, face the wheel? Two men enter, one man leave? If we give you a deal and you break it, I'm Tina Turner, okay? And I'm the man who's gonna leave, so if you don't keep your promise, I'm gonna enforce that. But Letitia's absolutely right, and Letitia's a fine person. We both work in the community, we're both devoted to our neighborhood, and we both have some ideas that I think whoever you vote for, you're gonna get your value out of it. But this is the main reason I'm running, is because these devices to help businesses are all being deployed downtown and not down there. So if you, if it's good enough for Dan Gilbert, it is good enough for us.
Thank you.
Tina Turner has better legs.
Next question. What are your top five priorities? As elected as a District Four Councilperson, only your top five. Three minutes.
So, top five priorities, we know that the water infrastructure system is a tremendous issue. We know that Jefferson Chalmers residents have known that for a number of years. Um, that was one of my platform issues before the June twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth flood, uh, because I've worked alongside of so many of you, and I recognize that we may end up displacing households as a result of the continual flooding. Um, so that's first and foremost, we have to do something about it. We have to make sure that we are not only addressing backups into our homes, but the roadways, as well as the businesses within our communities, and so I'm believing that it's extremely important to make sure that our lines are clear, so that the capacity of our system has the ability to manage more. Um, but we also recognize that the influx of people into McComb County that drives all of their waste into our system helps to overwhelm our system, and so there's something that needs to be done there. I believe that access to affordable homeownership in this city is a tremendous issue. We have so many neighborhoods and so many houses within our community that are just sitting in the land bank, in their inventory, and continuing to deteriorate, just continuing to rot. A house sitting up, closed, is not going to benefit anybody. In order for us to revitalize our neighborhoods and improve safety within our neighborhoods, we need more eyes and ears within our residential areas. Um, so, water infrastructure, affordable access to homeownership, um, community centers, we know, let me say, community centers that encompasses a, a recreational center. We know that they're working on something, um, within Jefferson Chalmers, but it's not nearly what the community needs. It's not nearly the size, it's not going to help address, uh, making sure that our residents have access to swimming pools, to recreational activities, as well as it being a community center. We also have to remember that years ago, when I was a kid, we had community centers and rec centers throughout our neighborhoods. My three minutes are not it. Uh, and, and let me say, uh, making sure that I am helping to reduce crime is one of the things that I will, um, really focus on, and that is creating skill-building programs, um, and making sure that we can take people off the street and they have access to, um, recreational activities and creating jobs within our communities, and then just being accessible to all of you.
That's my reading. I'm looking at you, and you go on.
Nobody's, nobody's reached the time that you, that you've set so far.
Thank you.
So, uh, I could probably, I could probably answer this in, in ten seconds.
No, we don't want ten.
If I just took a page from Coleman Young's playbook, which would be jobs, 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 and then jobs. I've had a job since I was eleven. I was raised by, uh, a single mother, and I know the value of work, and I know what hard work means to a family. I know with the example of parents working, my mom was a union activist and a teacher, and whatever job she could find, and she taught me how important it is to work. So job is number one. We talk about opportunity. That's part and parcel of opportunity. We talk about safety. Unlike my opponent, I don't want to defund the police. I want more and better police. I want people, speed humps, I like speed humps, but I'd really rather have officers who are stopping the spears and keeping an eye on our neighborhoods, who get to know us, who become part of the community, who know our children, who know we are part of the community too, who aren't so stressed out because they're running around on mandatory overtime, which by the way, is very expensive. I also don't want our police to get trained and immediately go to the suburbs. We have suburban police departments waiting in the parking lot after graduation to steal our police, who we've paid a lot of money to train. I want us to require police graduates to make a commitment of three to five years to patrol our streets, to be part of our community. We trained you, you come and do the job we brought you in to do. If you leave earlier, you're gonna have to pay back some of that tuition. I want recreation as well. I'm a coach. Again, I'm, I'm the son of a single mother. If it wasn't for my coaches, my teachers, and my neighbors, these bars here, I'd be behind them, and they wouldn't be at a church, they'd be someplace else. So I know the example we need to set. When I coached baseball at Baldur Park for Eagle Sports, I was often the only dad on that field. I know we need to have recreation, and what we need to have is a recreational center that is central to all neighborhoods in the district. And if I'm elected to council, I will advocate for putting that in our capital budget, I will vote for that, and I will make sure the other six districts know that we have been shorted. It's time to make District Four whole with our own rec center. Um, I believe in accountability. I believe that if you take a pledge, if you take an oath to serve the citizens, you need to serve the citizens. And if you are like Gabe Leland, who I exposed three years ago, I will not sit next to Gabe Leland or the next Gabe Leland and not say that there is a rat in the house. I will call that rat out, and I will make sure that the other nine, the other eight council members know that there's some fun and games going on, I'm not a part of it, party of it, and if I found out about it, I'm gonna let people know. And the other thing, I'm gonna try and get the dirty money out of politics. There's money in the, coming into this race from people under investigation and from Gross Point. I would not accept that kind of support. I would denounce people from outside this district who are trying to support my candidacy. I've not heard my opponent say that, but I'll just tell you this right now. I am running to bring honest change to Detroit politics, to clean up City Hall and to clean up our neighborhoods.
Question for both candidates. Without excuses, why didn't you investigate a fake bankruptcy and Duggan's involvement in demolition contracts? And I'm gonna let you take, I'm gonna let you take that one first. Like, remember, Gwen is in charge.
Well, I think the bishop's in charge. Well, I think the bishop's in charge, but he's turned over the mic to Gwen for a hot minute here. So, let me answer this one very, very briefly, because I've heard a lot of people talk about what I haven't had investigated. I am one reporter who covered City Hall. At the time the bankruptcy was going on, I was covering all of Michigan as an investigative reporter. I was not in City Hall, I was not assigned to the bankruptcy. I was a reporter at Fox Two. I was covering a public corruption trial, the biggest one in Detroit history. And since then, I've been busting state Supreme Court justices who doesn't go to work, Gabe Leland, Burton Leland, exposing all the corporate money that was being plowed into Mike Duggan's write-in campaign. I've been exposing state senators from Macomb County and all throughout Michigan who are taking money with them when they leave office, but spending on things that they want to spend it on, not what they're supposed to spend it on. So I've investigated everything, from Detroit to Wayne to Macomb County. Bob Ficano, one of the reasons he's not your county executive anymore, is because some of the stories that I did. So I've investigated a lot of things, but the bankruptcy was investigated by the Detroit Free Press and the Detroit News. I was not an employee of either paper at that time. I'm not a business reporter, I'm not a financial reporter, I'm a watchdog reporter. And so I was watching the dogs and calling them out. So it was not my assignment, but I'll tell you what, that bankruptcy, I manage my money, I pay my bills, and I'm someone you can trust to make sure that we will not have another bankruptcy, because this time, if we go down again, there will be no rescue plan. So you need to bring somebody in who knows how to balance a checkbook, who knows how to take care of business, because we cannot go bankrupt again. That's it, folks. And I, you know, if I'd been assigned to cover it, I would have. But like all of you, you have a job, you do the job you do, and at the end of the day, you go home and hug your kids. There's a girl.
I don't know that that question was actually for me, but we know that a lot of people in the city know that the bankruptcy was contrived. We know that it was put in place so that so many of our assets would be taken away from the city. And we see where that's gotten us now, right? We see we have the Great Lakes Water Authority, we see we have the state managing Belle Isle, why the city couldn't do it on its own, because somebody came in and said we were bankrupt. I will tell you this, I did lead an effort in my neighborhood, in, actually in Cornerstone Village, when Gross Point wanted to move their trash yard to the city of Detroit. And the city of Detroit had already given them the permit to move it into the city. And everybody looked and said, well, Letitia, how are you fighting and they've already gotten the permit? Because just based on my experience on the Board of Zoning Appeals, I looked at the permit that they had received, and they were not putting in what they said they were putting in. And so I rallied with two of our community leaders, and we went, told the people what was going on, and we went to the city, and the city said, oh, well, let's rescind that permit, so that Gross Point cannot put their trash yard in Cornerstone Village. So that's what I've just done as a resident, fighting for the people and making sure that we are done right in our community, that our community's voice stands up and is the one that is being heard in City Hall. Let me say this, going back to something that my opponent said, I don't need him to speak for me. I can speak for myself. And as it relates to me supporting defunding the police, I do support redirecting dollars to make sure that we reduce crime. I do support more neighborhood police officers within our community who come from our community, who know and understand the culture of our community, and they police differently. My own neighborhood police officer lived around the corner from me, and I could see that every day in the work that he did. Let me also say that so many people know the work that I've done over the last 14 years, and so many people know the work that my opponent has done when he was a watchdog reporter. There are people that are rising up to support my campaign, and I know nothing about it. I believe they're supporting me because I support the voice of the people. Now, I also know that my opponent has a reputation that precedes him, and there are folks that he has chased after that has led to a shaming campaign and no charges whatsoever. I've had so many of them call me and say, I want to support you however I can. That support, I say, come out and knock doors with me. I'm not asking anybody to put money into this campaign, but everybody knows that I'm a grassroots candidate. Everybody knows that I have primarily funded my campaign with Detroit residents and predominantly District Four residents.
For both candidates, what was your position on Proposal P and why? Letitia, would you take that?
So, having worked, volunteered in the community, being from the community, I recognize that the voice of our residents has not been supported the way that it should. And I think we see government working in that respect. So Proposal P for me was the voice of the community stepping up and saying, government, this is how we want you to operate, because we have not seen you doing all of these things. But local government is supposed to predominantly address the needs of the people. The people feel like their needs weren't being addressed, that their needs weren't being met. So I supported Proposal P, and came out and said that I supported Proposal P. I have no shame in saying that I support Proposal P. What we see now is a lot of ordinances being put forth that came from Proposal P. But we know that there was a campaign that was done completely against Proposal P that was full of fabricated information. And unfortunately, that is what got to more residents and discouraged residents from supporting Proposal P. But I supported it because I support the voice of the people. People had two and a half years to go before the commission to address any issues and concerns that they had, to say, okay, I don't like what you're putting forward. And so to let the process play out, because the people stood up and spoke, I supported the people.
So, since we're setting the record straight, let me just tell you a little bit about this story, I think Letitia claims I shamed somebody. There's a city councilwoman who had an abandoned house across from a park where I've raised a lot of money to help kids, she wasn't fixing it up, so I've told people. Her own house was not up to code. She said it wasn't. I showed that it was cited by the city for not being up to code, and she has since fixed it up. And as far as taking money from, where you taking from? I haven't taken $5,000 from Dan Gilbert's pack, but my opponent has. So, that's some outside money from a big cat who wants things. I got the paperwork if somebody wants to see it. Proposal P, we just want the facts to be for themselves. But now let's get to Proposal P. I did not campaign on Proposal P. It was not an issue for me. I'm talking about the name, but let me tell you about Proposal P. Let me tell you about Proposal P, please, if I could, Ani, Ani, if I could.
Ani, my name is Mr. Bomani.
Okay, well, you call yourself Ani, so we'll call you Mr. Bomani.
Hold on, hold on.
If you wouldn't interrupt me, please, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, both of you.
If you wouldn't mind.
Okay, excuse me. Okay, thank you. But we want to be able to hear the facts, and we want not address anybody except me.
I'm sorry. I appreciate it.
We're gonna leave it that way. I would rather it be that way, we can hear from the candidates. Can I get amen? And hear from the candidates and hear what they have to say, and we're gonna keep this candidate forum moving. We may not like what you're saying, I may not agree with what you're saying, but we're all listening. So, let's keep this going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, let me tell you what I did say during the primary, that I think the best parts of Proposal P can be passed by the council. And one of my problems with the city council is that it wasn't doing the stuff before Proposal P was put forward. But don't take my word for it. This is what the nonprofit Citizens Research Council said. Many specific provisions that are proposed in the new city charter can be addressed through the ordinance process or amendments to the current charter. I have a plan to keep the water flowing for all Detroiters, is to create a nonprofit modeled on THAW, the Heat and Warm Fund, where we use some city dollars, some foundation money, some charity money, some nonprofit money, where we have fundraisers, and what we do is we create an entity that will keep the water on for Detroiters who can't afford to keep the water on without increasing the rates for the rest of us who are paying our bills. This is something that works, you see it with THAW, we can replicate that. We can do that outside of Proposal P. And my problem with people who are just, they love Proposal P so much, it was defeated, now what do we do? I don't want to fight to Proposal P fight. I want to take the best parts of Proposal P and move it forward. I'm a 20-year union activist organizer negotiator and steward. Responsible contracting, I don't need a proposal to tell me if you're a bad company, I'm not gonna give you any city dollars, but if we need to pass an ordinance, we can do that. Let me tell you one other thing about this. Can the change be made by charter amendment brought back by council as opposed to charter revision? You want to put it in the charter, we can still do that. Let's focus on the problems we can fix. The last battle is over, it's time for us to work together to make things better.
I didn't support P. That's what you said. This time, for whatever reason, we have two individual questions. One for you, Letitia, and one for ML.
This is the last question?
This is the last one? Okay.
Well, 15 minutes to go.
Oh, okay.
I have to go to my team. This is the last question.
Okay. Hey, Letitia. And then you.
I shouldn't have said last question, I should have said, there's 15 minutes left.
Oh, oh, okay. I have 15 minutes.
There's 15 minutes till 11.
Oh, this went by fast. Okay, so.
I'm glad we're having fun.
ML, your next door is closed.
That's getting ready to fall. Okay, there it is.
Thank you.
You got it, thank you.
Yeah, we don't want no accidents. Okay, let me go over that again, ML. Your next door is closed. A backflow, and how it will save so much money, only if all homeowners get one. Why promote this as a solution? It will only work if everyone gets it, but five pounds of pressure will lock. Water in the basement, why haven't you investigated? White politicians? Like you did Kwame.
Okay, okay. Thank you for the question. Let me take the last part first, because I think I just addressed that. Senator Jack Brandonberg, white. State Supreme Court Justice Brian Zara, white. Gabe Leland, white. Burton Leland, white. Mike Duggan, white. Bob Ficano, white. But this shouldn't be about black and white, it should be about right and wrong. And I've exposed politicians from every part of the state, from every race, from every religion. I investigated a state Supreme Court justice who's from Malta, his family's from Malta, so am I anti-Maltese? Please, I'm about right and wrong, and if you betray the people, you will have to answer to me at some point, because you deserve people who keep their oath. You deserve people who put public service before self-service, and that will not change. Now, on the backflow preventers, let me just say this. I am calling for Detroit Water and Sewerage and Great Lakes to pay for those, to provide those to our homes, because they're part of, part of their compact with us is to protect our homes. So they have to go in all our homes at the system's expense. The other thing about those is they need to be checked on a regular basis, we need to make sure they don't get clogged. And the reason why just having one in one home in a neighborhood isn't enough, because when all that water goes flowing down, the pressure is too great, so we just spread the pressure. We need to spread the solution. But let me also be clear, that is not the only part of my solution to try and stop the flooding. It's part of using our land to hold this off. And there was just a story in the paper today, Rouge Park, they're taking dirt out of Rouge Park and moving it to another park so they can hold 100 million gallons of water to keep it out of our system. Because we don't know whether the pumps are good or not, but what we do know is this system can't take any more water. And to rebuild the system, to redo the pipes, that is gonna take time. I think there's a lot of people who live within sound of my voice who can't wait to find a solution to the flooding. We have to stop the flooding now. And so one way is to make sure that we all have those protections for our homes. Because I live at East Out of Drive in Mac, I never thought I lived close to the water until it was coming up from my basement. So we all need those protections, and I think those should be installed from everybody in the floodplain, in the service area, from the Counter Creek pumps, the Fruit pumps, and the Blue Hill pumps. And this green, this green infrastructure does work. On Oakman Boulevard, they have used tanks underneath their medians to hold the water and keep it out of the system. They hold 37 million gallons of water. And if anybody's seen the retention pond up at Benito and Kirchville, when we had the flood, people on Benito told me, the water filled up, we had a lake down the street, and within a couple days, the water went down and our basements were dry. This works, it's cheaper than busting up the system, it's something we can get to now, and it's something that can help all of us. I'm sorry, that's my, that's my next call. That's time for me to stop. Thank you.
Letitia, this question is for you. What is NES, and does it help or hurt communities? NEZ, NES?
Oh, Neighborhood Enterprise Zone. Folks listening, NES is Enterprise, Neighborhood Enterprise Zone.
So, Neighborhood Enterprise Zone is a state, a state law that gives cities the opportunity to identify, I believe it's 15% of Detroiters that will receive a tax reduction in their property tax, if they agree to do some improvements to their property. And so the challenge with it in Detroit is, it's for these specific areas. There are, and I believe the council people identify the areas within their district that will, that have the ability to apply for the NEZ. And in District Four, our area was actually reduced this time around for the upcoming 15-year abatement. So, it makes it challenging to do improvements throughout other parts of the district and encourage people to move into those areas, because their property taxes are going to go up immediately as they start to revitalize their house and revitalize the neighborhood.
How much time again?
It's 10:50.
Okay, 10 minutes. So we have two minutes apiece. Thank you all for being so patient, I appreciate that. The last question for both of you. According to the Michigan State Constitution, the Headley Amendment of 1978 requires that nearly half of all state revenue, about 48.97%, be spent on local governments as a group to provide services, services to the residents, such as police, fire, public schools, waste disposal, recreation, and the likes, essential to the daily life of Michigan residents. District Four appears to be seriously lacking in all these areas. What action do you believe you can take as councilperson to hold the state accountable for its financial obligation to the city of Detroit? ML?
I'm glad we saved the easy one for last. First of all, the Headley Amendment has been an abomination since it was put into place. It limits our community's ability to raise the money we need to raise for the services that we need to serve our neighbors. Detroit draws a disproportionately small amount of its budget from property taxes, that's why we have the income tax. And because of this cap on our property taxes, we can't raise the money we need to provide those services. If the state is leaving us short, if the state is not fulfilling its obligation to us, they will hear me scream about it, they will see me in Lansing testifying about it, and I will use everything within my power to make sure that we get our fair share. But let me tell you something else about our fair share. We've been let down by elected officials before, we've been let down by politicians before. And so one of the things that I do is I look for creative solutions. I try and form strategic partnerships. That's why when I talk about solving our problems, I'm talking about churches, nonprofits, foundations, charities, community organizations, because if there's something we need, this is why I cut the grass on the median on Out of Drive, not because it's my job, not because I'm supposed to, I pay taxes for somebody else to do it. Because if something needs to get done, I'm gonna do what I have to do to get it done, and I'm gonna bring... it done. And I'm gonna bring these non-governmental entities in there to help fill in the gap. Eastside U Sports Foundation, Eagle Sports, SOAR Tutoring, they are filling the gap in our recreation menu. We are finding ways to provide the services people need. And so, if government can't do it, I'm absolutely gonna fight to make sure government does what it's supposed to. But in the meantime, we've gotta do something to make sure that our kids and our families get what they need, because while the clock keeps ticking, we don't stop getting older. So, we're gonna work now. I'm working now to bring solutions to our neighborhoods, and I won't ever stop doing that. I do have to go to a neighborhood club. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. I would love to stay for some fellowship. If I may, I may leave some flyers, but I'll try and stay for the last bit, but I got a jet right at eleven, because I'm gonna be very rude the next group. Thank you very much for having us out here today.
So, there is a lawsuit that one of our neighbors is actually put forward to the state to make sure that we get our fair share of revenue as it relates to the Headley Amendment. I think it's important to build positive relationships with other elected officials. I have a great working relationship with our state legislators to make sure that they are holding the state accountable for the budgeting dollars and the revenue dollars that should be coming to the city of Detroit. And then, I think within city government, it's important for us to make sure that those dollars are disseminated appropriately to address the needs of the people within our communities. One of the things that we've seen continually is that we don't have a loud enough voice of representative within City Hall who's going and saying, "These are the issues that we have within our district," and making sure that we address those issues so we don't continue to have the same issues year after year. And so, I will make sure I continue to do that and recognizing the challenges that we've seen over the last at least ten years that I've been volunteering as a community advocate, making sure that we work to address the more systemic issues, and then start to make sure that we're addressing all of our everyday issues is of my utmost importance.
Let's give both of our candidates a round of applause. At this great time, I certainly would like to thank my co-partners, our advocates, Jeff Chalmers, their pockets of advocates, Robert Sessler. Raise your hand, so we know who you are. Linda Bowie. I thank the People's Platform for allowing us and sponsoring us and having those who are working so diligently to make a forum for the community, so people will have an opportunity to hear the candidates and make a decision of who you think is the best person. Before you leave, please make sure we have your information, your email address, a telephone number, so that we can get in contact with you again. I also took it upon myself, Linda and I, and Bob's approval, that we did something for you. Proposal P jumped back on the ballot, and it became Proposal S. And Harriet Tubman endorsed it.
Hold on one second. I just wanted to officially say that this is the reclosure of the Detroit People's Platform part of this, of this meeting. And we thank you all for coming. Please visit detroitpeople'splatform.org. But this closes the part that is C3, and the part that we are involved with, and thank you so much.
Okay, I can keep going then.
We appreciate community support. We're out.
Thank you. Okay, you're out.